I'm like, look, I'm like the motion that we approve the revised revenue and revenue and revised expenditure appropriations to the twenty twenty one school budget.
Okay.
Motion is second. You're in the session. Do you have a comment?
Yes.
You think it will?
Yes.
The others?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You had any other questions or anything, anything else?
We did have the request from the school board for additional care money. I don't think we have any questions about that. You all had gotten some other funds too that you were.
We did and we were.
Played on what you would use those for.
Well, we're still waiting for the legislators at the end of January. Hopefully there'll be some whole harmless clauses. You know, the state has the finances, but we're not in terrible shape here. The rest of the state, many of them are, so that's why the legislation wanted to wait until ADM, self-staff, sort of two big ones. And see what we can do for that. So a lot of the other funds will, they're pretty much earmarked for what you can spend them on. So most of those will be for technology and getting technology into homes at the point when we can see exactly where our budget is this year. We're in, I have a lot of meetings with a lot of superintendents because there's a lot of them waiting for the same thing with this budget. We were fortunate in the priority for me and always should be as we give the step raise every year where either going to revert back to two thousand and eight on the Great Recession. And school divisions are trying to do that now and they just can't do it. It's going to kill your next year's budget. So right now we're in good shape to finish the year. We gotta wait for what the General Assembly does in spring. And then we'll go from there. There's going to be more needs. There's no question because of the pandemic. There'll be technology needs. There'll be needs to continue with blended and we'll see what happens. We're going to hit a stretch here where we're, and as you can see, some of those items on that list are for the online and virtual and teachers are very comfortable with those items. It's continually evolving. The fortunate thing for us, I hate to say fortunate, but we don't give a lot of money comparatively because there is a lot of school divisions who get a lot of money, millions of dollars, that it's going to be very difficult to spend because these are completely earmarked and audited to care as well. And through the state. So I spend time with Kent Dicky, same one who worked on our VPS A loan and talking with him and our needs are fairly straightforward and see if you just spend the funds that we have. They're not hundreds of thousands of dollars. We'll wait and see. Wait and see with the end of this year and next year budget holds. Keep moving along and doing all we can to keep everybody safe. I will say this, that Dr. Bissell and Jason D are tremendous. The turnaround time on my phone calls are extraordinary. It's just extraordinary. They trace, they talk. Fortunately, I don't spend a lot of time, but once is enough. And as we know, it's not getting any better. And we're watching it closely and working with the Department of Education and Department of Health and really working with the other superintendents in our health district. Now it's about the health district and making sure we're not overwhelming the health district and see what we have. So it's very closely watched and we'll keep rolling with it and do all we can to keep it safe and we'll err on the side of caution.
As cases have increased, have you seen the HSL make any adjustments to their proposed springs have you?
No, nothing at all at this time. When I say at this time, Coach Holland, Dr. Holland was on the call this morning with the state superintendent. I mean, it's going to be a local decision and for us, it's a little easier because we know who we play. Now you know the twenty five limit is those pertaining, other than the participants.
Right.
So you know, other schools may say no one comes. You know, those are the.
From a standpoint, have they changed anything as far as actually having a program in the spring?
Right now everything's planned.
Everything's still.
December seventh, first day of basketball. I will say at this point, nothing has changed.
That'll, I'm assuming that'll be available. Your citizens is probably on travel.
Yes, we'll have, we'll have all our streams there. We'll look at the best way for away games, whether it's based on live. You know, the citizens won't be there. They'll obviously be able to play the games later. But we'll look at ways to do it live. You know, because there is a lot of talk that opposing schools and probably like us, we just won't have visiting parents.
It seems to me like, you know, if we go into winter, there's probably going to be less and less just interacting people, being able to interact with people. Sometimes, you know, sports are a way that people can kind of feel a common bond with and without them. I think it's important to give people an opportunity to be able to watch.
Yeah, it hopefully live on TV with very small gatherings in your house over winter and that would probably help us because exactly what they said and what Dr. Bissell said about COVID fatigue and her updates.
Sure.
It's happening, you know, people.
Yeah, so maybe I'll tell you that we can give people that just to feel like they're part of the community without calling out meeting people.
I don't think there's any question. We'll be streaming live both ways. We'll find a way for the away games. We'll see what comes out, but the process for that, we'll watch the metrics. Boy, County right now is the only one in our area that's not in red or one step above, you know, but we're not in red. It's like anything that we do, we'll consult and with our opposing team, we'll consult with the health district and see if there is any reason why a school can't have an event. And like I said, we work directly with our, with our opponents and we'll go from there. No general mission. It'll be all, here's the list, here's the families. That's still being worked out. We'll see, but right now that's what it looks like it's leaning to. Especially after Friday.
Also wanted to mention and thank you for working through your communication. There were a few glitches cranking up on the virtual, but you've got them all corrected from what I, I haven't had any conversations or any concerns related to me since.
They're good. Our class sizes are down, the virtual class sizes are down. You know, we were able to accommodate that and get that going. It's still, it's still difficult for teachers, but they're rolling with it, the blended part. And you know, things are going about as good as they can. We just got to keep improving them because like, like we said, we don't know what's next. You know, we don't know what, what the next order is, but we'll be ready for it.
My prayers are with you and the fellow staff. I mean, you're really out on the sidelines for this and doing really important work because I mean, our kids deserve to continue to be able to learn.
It's, it's just so rewarding being in schools. I spend a lot more time in schools. It's just so good, you know, to see teachers like, like your wife and those kids in there. And I mean, they're, it's like nothing, like there's no pandemic at all except their masks and apart. Wearing a mask all day long, but they're playing on the playground. Seeing their buddies, that's all good.
We'll get it done one way or another.
We will.
Yeah.
We will. Two o'clock, a little bit before two. If you park up there, you walk down the sidewalk. If you got a four wheel drive and want to park across the street, that's not our property. You're welcome to. We'll see you down there and we'll have, we'll have everything set up. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, are you?
Yes, you want to do it?
Well, and another issue, as we were talking about the high school weekend, Jacob and I have been discussing a lot about what we want to do with the rec basketball and especially with these new regulations. We don't have capability to, you know, string them live, you know.
And you're starting to twenty five people.
I think his thinking is if we told the parents that they could not come in there to watch the games, that would not go overwhelm. So of course we wanted to ask you all, but our recommendation would be just not to try to have basketball.
Another thing that concerns me on the indoor ones too, many of our hospitals don't have the proper air circulation. And I know our schools don't have the preventive filters and all that stuff. They need a good idea just about having any indoor activities.
That was our recommendation. We did okay with.
Yeah, we were outside.
The kids were pretty good about wearing their mask and.
Yeah.
It was just, you know, we need to go to the gym.
I mean, I hate it, but I mean, these programs are an outlet for these children.
Absolutely.
They're under pressure with schoolwork. They're under pressure at home. It's always been their outlet. You know, their fun activity to release. I think a lot of coaches realize that. Maybe let them get away with a little more than they should normally should, but it's their release.
We want to keep them safe.
Yes.
I would wonder, are there, are there, and I know, you know, when we're taking, talking outdoor with winter time, you never know the weather, but maybe, maybe some outdoor activities, one day activities or something for children in the heat area like.
Like hockey or something.
Yeah, you know, like, like this weekend we'll have something for four D, next weekend we'll have something in Henry Valley, the next to check. We can do something maybe for the high school.
Like a field day.
Field day, like soccer.
Yeah.
Or whatever, you know. I don't know if your school used to have what they call the May Day. We could have a December day, a January day.
November day.
You know, it's just a thought. It's up to the board.
That's an idea that, yeah, I think it's great.
Just to give the least children something to.
Do? Yeah.
Come work out on the other farm.
Yeah. Cut brush on, cut brush on the Blue Rose Farm, you know, whatever works out.
I got something going on.
I made comments like that years ago and I got confused that it was wrote in the paper and me being for forest child like.
All right, don't be out. What does that mean? They're selling Christmas.
You don't have to do that.
We just.
But no, I just thought we had, you know, just an occasion, you know, if you don't give one a mark or something, you know, we're hoping. Maybe Jacob could come up with some ideas that would.
I mean, I know field days are really.
Even hiking, I mean. Whatever, ten kids and hike the buffalo.
Or, or the Rocky Knob train or, you know, something, you know. Just something to do. And they might even get, might have one of the, we've got, I don't know if call them naturalist or naturist or whatever. We're loaded with those.
There we are.
They might even be willing to lead a event. Or on Buffalo, you can take them three rattlesnakes now. They don't, they don't need them.
Yeah, they have.
They probably have the kettles now. You know, just looking through Facebook. I reckon when we read done that ready, where they got better access to park and stuff like that, I mean, it's covered with pictures.
Absolutely, indeed. Yep.
Well, it was a good time to get it done before all this was.
Yeah, sure was.
The problem is there's not enough parking to get to the, at the site. That's been the problem.
Yeah.
I see where I'm getting from Carroll County posting where they come down, Montgomery County.
As I remember, if you got the right idea, well, you can get up over on the backside too.
It's difficult, but.
It is.
I'll carry one part of the weight.
I, I have to. We actually picked it up and carried it to Carlson and the gullies.
Tell you what, there was a group of hikers that got up there in the summer and there was a gentleman from Virginia Tech's Corps of Cadets. And supposedly he was there to photograph the F-15s flying into the buffalo, well, not into, but you know, backing on the buffalo as they do and training. And this group of people were there for it. And the tech guy posted photos of it and these people were there to see and they, they were just, they, the exclamation of the video on YouTube of them watching them come. And I just recently went down to be with my daughter-in-law's sister, who is going to be an F-15 Wizzo, which is the navigator in that plane and was on the simulator. And I flew the F-15 over Floyd County into the buffalo and then over Virginia Tech.
Into the buffalo.
That's where it ends.
Backing the buffalo, backing the buffalo. But yeah, it's just incredible, the video that came out of that. If you can find that, there's a bunch of the stuff like that, but if you can find that, it was like in June, it was something else to watch.
Fascinating me was he gave a whole list of what, you know, when he used and all this speed and all this stuff, which is, you know, space science to me. I mean, he actually had a picture of where that one of the jets coming around. You could see the pilot.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just a still photo.
Yeah, it was incredible.
See the pilot and I thought, good Lord, you know, like a picture as fast as anything to come around.
And be that clear.
Yeah.
He was ready for it. He knew they were coming. It was incredible.
Anyway.
Want to knock out this last?
Yes.
We had a request from the regional jail fund that had the subsidy bonuses for them. But the last update that I got from the sheriff and Mr. Cunningham helping with this was that they were going to use their own funding to provide those with their own budget.
So they go through it.
Several of the localities have already committed all of their care's money, so they weren't able to participate in helping that. They're tapping off the table. The only other one I had was this request from the school board for sixty eight thousand to reimburse the list of items they purchased.
I didn't see any on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did your copy of this.
Did you see any of yours? Did you see anything on it that concerned you?
And then.
I, I don't have a problem with the schools.
No, you do.
You know, I just want to kind of give a shout out to staff and all the department heads and everything with this care's money, how careful they've been, make sure that they within the guidelines and. It's incredible how close they all works together and just taking care of it, you know.
So that, that sixty eight thousand will come off of seven fifty seven?
Yes, that basically leaves us a twelve fifty seven, eight. You doing the math there, Jim?
That's what I'm getting ready to because I need to know. So that's going to leave somewhere in the six hundred eighty nine thousand range.
Six hundred eighty nine thousand?
Yeah, eight sixty eight. What I came up with is that.
Eight sixty eight.
Did I do that correct? I'm sure they're down the calculator as well. We'll use their number instead of mine.
I've got another clear money question.
Linda and I here wants to.
Yeah, we did have one too.
I need to go to first line.
Problem.
Well, no, I've just been thinking, this is just me. They don't really say anything to me about it, but we gave hazard pay to some of our employees. Would, would the folks at work for the elections be eligible for any type of bonus for that?
Hazard pay? Not there. I know. The auditor and our western attorneys deal will let me do anything for solid waste.
I just thought I'd ask because I did, I came and called everybody, locked everybody in town. And it, it, I've been thinking about it since the election and how many people voted and, you know, yeah, just going through the block.
What is the stumbling block for our solid waste? Have they given you a clear read on that?
That there, it says it could be public health or public safety, but they're classified as public works.
Not public safety. We were trying to muster a lot of.
Yeah, we've had trash out there. It's going to create problems. That's public safety.
And, and, and environmentally.
That's why I could think because, you know, we could start to recycle and park down for vital ones. Of course, the auditor did admit to me the other day, he said, it's going to be up to you all how you document it. He was starting to.
Move that needle a little bit.
Can you see if you could get him to move a whole lot more between now and December?
We just don't know that he'll be the final say.
Right, right.
We don't know how it's going to.
Yeah, the federal ordinance wanted.
They still don't have the room.
They still don't have, yeah.
I'm fed here. I would really like to. Like we're talking about their, they, they handling stuff coming out of households.
Right.
And who knows what was in, even if they weren't for the other buyers, it had to be something else. And they need, you know.
Well, you had households, you had manufacturing, business. I mean, it's, it's exposed from all three areas.
Yeah, I mean, everything. Medical.
Yeah, medical.
Frankly, most, all, I mean, just about every college employee that we have, I'm sure of all of them. Whether it's staff that was here or at the library, I mean, everyone's being exposed and so up.
And every day working.
I, I do see, just piggybacking off of Lawrence's thing about the electoral board, but these electoral board additional funds, has there been anything else brought to our attention from the electoral board recently from the election? So that is the most up to date.
As far as we know.
As far as we know.
That wasn't voluntary.
No, I know that. I know that.
I mean, it's all in the system, but it wasn't going to the bonuses.
No, toward the straight salary, yeah. For all those extra. But I just didn't know if there was anything else that came in because I know that they were still trying to, I think, there may be still some I think. I don't know.
He may have the same.
Okay, okay, good.
Well, we need to mention it to her again before our December meeting.
Yeah.
Since.
Yeah, definitely.
The December is still the deadline.
Yeah.
Now, there is talk of extending it, but nothing's. Nothing we have proceeded on that December deadline.
So do you want to take, yeah, if you'd like to? No, not yet. You got to spend a little more money.
Well, we hope to.
Yeah.
We got our bids in at PSA, which were astronomical. We've worked a deal where we can purchase the valves and all the equipment, all the parts to put them in and the meters to read them and the train at a much reduced price. The problem we're running into is getting them installed by the end of December. The town, I think, it's been projected that the town could add some, we need about a hundred fifteen thousand dollars more to get them installed by the end of December. If the town comes up with their portion, if we can come up with an additional eighty thousand, then contractor, we're pretty sure the contractor can get them all installed by the December deadline.
Is that, is that all the meters?
That's all of them. Every one of them being, oh, that's the game.
That's the figure, yeah.
Now, weather plays in, but I talked to Richard after our text this morning. He's working today on getting everything in line, getting meters in, all the equipment in.
So we need additional eighty thousand. From the six eighty nine.
We could do the eighty and the town would do the rest.
Yeah.
And then the town ain't mad on this, but that's being protected is a possibility. If we could do the other eighty and the town do their part, then we can get all the meters in, it looks like by the end of December, which adds a concern since it all has to be spent by the end of December.
I'm, I'm personally fine with that, but I'll say this, if you, if the PSA comes back and says twenty percent of them weren't installed, then the PSA's got to find that money. It doesn't come out of our general fund. That's, that's what.
Yeah, no, no, no. This is, this is to cover everything.
Yeah, I understand that, but if you get, if your contractor gets to December thirty first and they say, we got eighty percent of them installed. Now, the last twenty percent, this cares.
Has to keep back.
Right. I'm not, I'm not pulling my other general fund or.
I mean, that's.
It's there.
The, the risk needs to be on the PSA. PSA gives it away that's free. I'm not sitting with these meetings. I don't know, but I don't want to take the risk. I don't want the county to take that risk.
We didn't specifically discuss that, but I have no problem with that.
Well, I mean, I think that's kind of maybe. I think your request and care's money, care's money would apply, so it's, I'm just kind of saying that because what I, let's say you get two snowstorms, you know, whatever, and they're a week behind and all of a sudden it doesn't get done.
And they demand that portion back and it's coming out of from us and not from the county. Well, that's kind of aligned with what I was talking about, like when we purchased the truck in the southern shop. Anything that gets kicked out, if we're in the joint effort, we, even though we're sitting here making the decision, we need to ask the other groups to pitch in if we can.
Yeah, I don't mind putting in the extra money, but I don't want it to, I don't want to get to January and then we say, well, now we got another general fund or the, you know.
We can approve the eighty thousand with that stipulation.
Yeah.
If that's part of.
Only if they qualify as.
That, that is, if there's any payback of all different projects, it's up to PSA to cover, period.
Cause I love PSA to be able to do it.
And that's the condition of getting the eighty thousand out there.
Yeah.
We can do that. I, I can't sit here and speak since we have it overboard. Say, Jack, your eyes are seeing what you're saying.
We're requesting an additional eighty thousand.
Your, your question, additional eighty thousand of care's money, so it's kind of an unspoken thing. We're not approving, we're not approving money. I'm just kind of saying, that's the deal.
I don't know. We need to reiterate that, that that was the board's decision.
Yeah.
That if, if it's not completed and any monies that's required to be turned back in to, for non-completion, that has to come from the PSA or whoever.
Right.
Well, town. I feel like we're going to have challenges going forward on.
Right.
I don't know. I understand. But you understand, I can't just say yes.
Yeah.
Kind of, I thought I better vocalize that kind of unspoken.
If it goes along with what I said the last time when we did the truck. So I. I'm, I'm comfortable with that agreement.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing it to us.
Yeah, and I guess one other along that line, you know, we may not have all the bills, you know, to be paid by your December eight years. So if it's agreeable with you all, everything, anything that we get, you know, towards the end of the month, can we just send you a. So, if it's agreeable with you all, uh, everything, anything that we get, you know, towards the end of the month, can we just send you a list? So we can go ahead and get a pair of them paid, it's okay.
Yeah, we just send us a list and you can go ahead and approve the item under our very.
Right.
Yeah.
Just as long as.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, what will be nice is if we get, get that extension, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I want to see them too, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Is there anything else?
I'm having a second meeting, you know.
Right. Is there anything else that you can think of that, uh, maybe, uh, uh, would Dina make another pitch to any of our businesses?
She had mentioned that, if there were funds left.
Yeah, I, I would definitely want any local business that is continuing to have struggle with, uh, you know, I'm really gratified, Angie, thank you for sending those payment, uh, uh, emails. And um, I'm gratified to see all the different types of people that we're reaching with this, it's, it's really gratifying. And I just hope that we make another, um, best to contact every business in this county.
Do we need, I don't know, consensus?
The consensus, so what you have after the eighty thousand is, uh, six oh nine eight sixty-eight oh one.
I love the penny.
Oh, one.
Okay.
So, uh, H C A O one, okay.
You never recorded it, Derek.
No, that penny, you.
You never recorded it.
I, I don't have a problem putting more money in those programs to.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I'll say this, I don't have a problem if we have money left over to turn back in either.
Just in case.
I know.
That, that.
But what?
Everybody that spins down to the exact penny, I guarantee you, they're going through a massive audit.
Yeah.
And we may go through a massive audit anyway, but it's gonna look a little better on somebody. If you got a little bit turned back in, then that means that you were trying to manage it and not just get money to be spent.
It may be easier to get it later on.
Yeah, I mean, you did this, oh, gentlemen, thought that there may be an extension, but.
I keep talking about it, but we, we just don't know at this point.
It is.
It's, it's gotta come from the federal.
It's, it's complete.
And, and Congress right now, they, they're still arguing over trying to do another and.
Yeah.
I, I don't see it happening before the next Congress.
Not with politics until January fourth or whenever, special election.
Yeah.
And Georgia.
Yeah.
It's gonna be grandstanding.
It's just, it's really locked right now.
Absolutely.
Nobody wants to agree to anything, even, I mean, I know there's a lot of things they want to try and do, but if they're gonna do another payout to the citizens, I think they should, if, if they're in agreement on that, they should go ahead and do that. Then argue the others.
Yeah, that's what the justice is doing.
You know, if, if that's what they're gonna do. Now, if they're not gonna do it anymore, then be grateful for what they did do, but they just keep.
They're not gonna do no worse than they say so.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Don't, don't put the hope out there and just dangle it, dangle it and say, well, now we can, you know.
I'm having a carrot in a box.
How much more we all thinking the rise is coming?
What was the total in that so far?
It was pretty three hundred and fifty thousand.
You got a month. You've basically got a month to do it, so you got your time at the end to get all the paperwork.
And all that money is pretty much gone?
It's been three hundred and twelve thousand.
So what are you thinking, payments based on the existing paperwork or additional payments, or are you thinking a new line of?
Additional.
Additional.
Additional payments, and they submit new reimbursements.
Right.
For those additional payments. We've already qualified them.
Right.
Up to that point, but they'll just have to, um, submit new reimbursements.
So, that would be based on losses for the third, fourth, fifth year.
We did what, all of it?
Um, I think it was, what, the September meeting?
September.
September.
So we'd be doing it based on the September, September, November year or something?
So what are you thinking?
Another hundred, a hundred and fifty?
Two?
Have you heard of that number? I seen some eyes do like this. I can't tell what they were doing with their mouths.
I think they had, she mentioned thirty, but, you know, anything would be correct.
Whatever.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna go around, yeah.
Fifty.
We're gonna be wanting.
Yeah, I don't remember the, I don't recall the number.
I mean, the, the thing is, it's certain, we've got certain requirements that we kind of built in, so I mean, if you add in, if you said, well, we're getting up to two hundred thousand, and you use thirty, then you use thirty, you know, it's not like you're gonna just throw them away.
Any unused money go back.
Goes back in, so I just assumed saying.
I don't know if I say a huge amount.
A huge amount than not, yeah, exactly, that's my, I'd say let's give you.
More than you possibly.
Two hundred thousand, in my opinion. Or do you think that's too much?
I'm a hundred fifty, I'm a hundred fifty, up to a hundred fifty.
All right, I say two hundred, I mean, it's, it's coming back anyway, if they don't.
I'd rather be out in the community.
Exactly, than sitting here to the feds. I mean, I understood your point.
Right, right.
But, I mean, we've got six hundred nine eight sixty-eight oh one, I just assumed, give rises, two hundred thousand to support our citizens in their businesses.
But as applications come in, even if, if, our meeting is on the eighth of December, so that's a little.
We could add something.
Right, we could add.
Yeah. That's what I'm just not willing to just.
I mean, even if.
Well, I know that.
If we have to call a special meeting to do it, I'm not about.
Well, we're gonna have some meetings in between anyway, we could advertise, or other business that may be conducted and have it take care of it.
Okay.
So what do you say, a hundred fifty?
I think a hundred fifty and then it must be by the eighth or one of the other meetings for coming up.
And some of this, I mean, with the census, you don't do a vote, so I mean, that's unbelievable.
It's just important for us.
I know, and one of our meetings would have to prove it, but if, if something, if a week from now, uh, if you need, you know that you're gonna do more than, you know.
You can do it and we can ratify it or agree on the next thing.
I just feel like, our citizens who are half businesses are working really, really hard and are self-employed citizens. I, I want it, I want it in the hands of people who need it here in our county, that's just my view.
And if you know of any self-employed businesses, we do have the abridged, uh, shorter application, and I'm happy to help folk walk through that with you.
Yeah, make a social media post about it and I'll share it, foreign lives and lights.
I should have done it at the beginning, please add my statement into this discussion. I'm sure everybody else will want to do.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that, I should have done that first.
All right, you're legal enough. All right.
Legal enough, is that anything like more, that, that's opposite of being more legal.
Yeah, I always want to be more legal.
That's no matter what is legal.
Legal enough is minimal, so, uh.
All right, Mr. Good morning, everyone. Um, uh, so once we're talking about PSAT funding, I wanted to provide an update on the visitor guide. Um, I really want to emphasize that it made a huge impact, your, your funding support that you committed. Um, we had a targeted seventy businesses, we've got ninety-one.
Excellent.
We added four extra pages. And I, I really want to emphasize that we could not have done this without the funding support. It made it accessible and affordable to a large number of businesses. And along that line, I've had businesses participate in the visitor guide that have never done it in the twenty-some years that we've done it. Uh, places like the country store in check, um, and, and we were intentionally trying to convince people around the county, uh, and get into the outlying areas, and we nailed that. We have a lot of services that we've never had before in the visitor guide. Um, so, uh, and, and we, we've also included a full page ad that TAC submitted for the shop Floyd's behave, just to really help push TAC. And there's a full page, um, on COVID safety practices. It's kind of a hush, uh, uh, pairing both the, the well, the committed campaign and the Floyd's safety pledge. It's identifying those, it factors that are, um, included in both, uh, safety pledges. And, um, we also asked businesses for what they are doing on an individual business level to, to be safe, um, with respect to the pandemic. So after every business was in there, there's a number of degrees, radiations that represent what type of tactics is, that the businesses are doing, whether it's curtsied delivery, special hours by appointment, um, outdoor services, you know, whatever the businesses are doing, contact, pay, contact was checking and debating for a lot of lodging differences. So it helps those residents and visitors navigate the reality that we're all facing right now, especially with the, uh, rising trajectory of the infections that we're all seeing. Um, uh, I got to have approved, um, you know, one of the blessings and curses of Floyd County is the Floyd Tommy, running on Floyd time. So I, I've, I've got, um, some loose ends to wrap up, um, we've got the map, the map done, but I need to proof those. But I expect to be able to get approved after the businesses review and start training before the end of the month. Um, and one question I, this would normally be an email or phone call to you. When do I have to have the invoice in, um, uh, for the, for the board of supervisors' contributions?
Maybe on December eighth, or only at least by the first, April fourth.
Oh, okay. Um, can I get them to print the invoice out before they finish the process and then we go ahead and pay it, would that work?
We'll probably hold the check after that till you get the products.
Okay, all right, so I, I think we can meet that timetable. So, uh, so I just wanted to give you an update, um, and then I also have one other update, um, that given the pandemic impact, uh, the cancel, the, the chamber has canceled its annual membership dinner, asylum auction and awards presentation. Um, we're doing things differently this year, so it's my pleasure to announce that Terry, Terry Morris is this year's business leader of the year.
Yeah.
So I wanted to do, um, the board supervisors, I want to get it, is that this all to earth or?
Thank you so much.
Uh, turn around so you can get a picture.
Get a picture.
Yeah, picture.
Okay. Uh, good job. Uh, Craig, can you come up? Craig, uh, chancellor of board, I've been, uh, be in the picture.
I did it right, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I can, can move for it, I can.
Uh, if you have an opportunity to do a photo with all of you and Terry later.
Yes.
Um, and I, I, um, I know the reason why we're honoring, uh, Terry is very obvious to you, but I wanted to just take off a couple things that, um, that may have been the, uh, presentations.
This is yours.
Um, get ready. Um, you're being recognized for all your contributions over the past, um, three plus decades, um, including working closely with others on expansion of Crenshaw Lighting and the H and V operation. Being a strong supporter of entrepreneurial programs and business growth programs. Uh, Lina was, was, uh, very complimentary of your support. Um, she said that it's, a lot of this stuff would not have happened without your support. Um, helping the county become financially stable enough to be able to fund major school projects, replacing all the quite old boilers in the school, bringing AC to the classrooms. And then, very important to all of us in the business community, is being an essential part of the, uh, efforts to expand the career, career and collaboration education center at Floyd County High School. Please to see that the groundbreaking seminar next later today at two o'clock. Um, and being a regional leader in the quality of life issue, the area agency on aging, anthrax retention, housing issues, and economic development issues, uh, initiatives that include talent retention and attraction, and higher education support, um, and, and, and the manufacturing support. And luckily, but not, not all of it, uh, you've worked with the cooperative extension and serving the county eight hundred plus forms and the youth program such as four H. So we thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
So that was a fun presentation.
Thank you so much.
Fun, thank you. Um, how, how can we work out for any specific food, anything like?
We just take a break.
We'll take a break and do it.
Uh, do it now or, or in the conference room or?
We'll do it inside, definitely, Nashville.
Right.
Court of the governor.
Okay.
I think everybody knows this, we don't have.
We could do it in the, uh, conference room.
What's the problem with we're more supervisors committing a misdemeanor?
Well, you know, you could, you could, um, just take your mask off, but promise not to breathe.